Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, December 17th at 9:00 a.m. Ann, will you call roll, please?
Fisher Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Mr. Smith is absent. Chairman Bone.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Commissioner Twilliger, for the last time, would you lead us in the invocation and pledge, please?
I sure will. Heavenly Father, we pray that you will not let us miss you this Christmas season. Help us to simplify our activities and traditions so that we can focus on our celebration of your birth. Thank you for being the prince of peace, and we ask that your peace will reign in our hearts this Christmas season. Thank you for the simple but life-changing message that you have for all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December 3rd and December 10th.
I make the motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. Port. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes for the 3rd and 10th and move on to the acceptance of the bills for November 25th and December 2nd.
Properly addressed, General Bank claims approved for the weeks of 11/25 through 11/29 in the amount of $631,996.22, with total general fund expenditures $557,308.80. General Bank claims for the weeks of 12/2 through 12/6, $613,449.60, with total general fund expenditures $152,255.94.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the bills.
Mr. Port. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills, and we do not have a special program of the day today. So at this point, I would ask for any public comment. Is there any public comment today? Seeing no public comment, we will move on to standing committee report number one, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Administration Operations Committee, have reviewed the proposal to remodel the County Services Building. The low bidder, Three Rivers Corporation, estimates the cost of this project as $2,999,300. We recommend approval of the request to award the contract to Three Rivers with a $300,000 construction contingency and that related contractual agreement, adequate funding for this project, is available in Fund 404, General Capital Improvements. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Administration Operations Committee recommends 86-8-22.
Thank you. Is there any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, I would just like to comment. I think it's great to see a local company get the business, so excited about that. Ann, will you call roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Geisler.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, no, one absent, motion carries.
Committee report number two, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the attached changes to County Policy 303.1, purchasing policy, as submitted by the procurement and contracts administrator. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 84-8-24.
Any commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Number three, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the Care Coordination Agreement with Blue Cross Complete for the provision and coordination of children's special health care services. The term of this agreement is October 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, and will renew automatically. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends 113-12-24.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Mr. Smith. I'm sorry. Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Number four, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the Care Coordination Agreement with Blue Cross Complete for the provision and coordination of elevated blood-led case management. The term of this agreement is October 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, and will renew automatically. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends approval of 114-12-24.
Any discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Number five, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the request to extend the contract between Midland County and Rehman for auditing services. The period of this extension covers the fiscal year audits from 2025 through 2034. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson, James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Administration Operations Committee recommends approval of 116-12-24.
Any discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Report number six, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Finance Committee, recommend approval of the proposed adjustments to the 2024 budget as submitted by the Finance Director. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends approval of Agenda Item 115-12-24.
Commissioner discussion? Ann, call roll, please.
Fisher Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Number seven, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Human Services Committee, recommend approval of the request to modify the staffing level for one community health nurse position. Under the request, the position will increase from a .6 FTE to a .8 FTE. The cost associated with this change will not result in an increase to the current budget. Respectfully submitted, Gaye Twilliger, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Eric Dorian, for Alena Smith, Human Services Committee.
Discussion? Roll, please.
Motion first.
Oh, yes. Excuse me, that's Commissioner Twilliger. Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, Human Services recommends approval of Agenda Item 111-12-24.
Let's try this again. Discussion? Roll, please.
Chairman, Commissioner Geisler, you got me.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Number eight, please.
Date of December 12th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, Human Services Committee, recommend approval of the request to modify the staffing level for a vacant Deputy Treasurer Accounting position in the County Treasurer's Office. Under the request, the position will be reduced to a, from a .8 FTE to a .5 FTE effective January 6, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Gaye Twilliger, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, Eric Dorian, for Alena Smith, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Human Services recommends approval of Agenda Item 112-12-24.
Discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Twilliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
That's it for committee reports. We have no RPCs. We have no old business. We do have one item of new business to take up. I would need a motion to take that up. So moved.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Ann, will you read the only item of new business?
Date of December 13th, 2024, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. I recommend the following appointments and/or reappointments to various boards and commissions, including a waiver of County Policy 101.3 for reappointments beyond a second term. Midland County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board, William Cosat as the City of Coleman at Large representative for a second term. Richard Ripke as the Central Michigan AFL-CIO Midland-Gladwin County Labor Council representative for an 11th term. The term of both appointments shall be January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027. Mid-Midland Mosquito Control Technical Advisory Committee, Fred Janosky for a third term, Joe Silva for a second term, Roger Garner for a third term. The term of all appointments shall be January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027. Midland County Parks and Recreation Commission, Leah Zimes for a partial first term to fill the vacancy due to the resignation of Janelle Kopke. The term of this appointment shall be effective December 17th, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. Midland County Road Commission, James Hyatt as the City of Midland representative for a second term. The term of this appointment shall be January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2030. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, District Number 3, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Glazer.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve these appointees to fill these vacancies.
Thank you. I think we'll just do a voice vote on this. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, your business passes. Thank you, everybody that's willing to serve. We certainly appreciate it. Let's move on to commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Snyder today.
Thank you. I was going to ask for, it all went fast. I was going to ask for a point of clarification on the road commission. Is that a five-year term or a six-year term? Okay. And then, so this is our last meeting with the Three Musketeers. I have appreciated you both so much, and we both got elected all at the same time, and we went in as brand-new, maybe a little nervous, and I appreciated the support from both of you, and so I'm going to miss you dearly. And for Jim leaving as well, Jim and I have been, have become good friends, and I appreciate your wisdom and knowledge. So looking forward to the new team, but a little bittersweet today as they say goodbye.
You're here.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes. I'd like to thank the board for your support. Yeah, my final meeting as well. Appreciate the support of my constituents in District 3, and it's been a delight serving, a wonderful experience, and I wish the best for all of the new commissioners who are coming on board, and I hope you enjoy your work as much as I have enjoyed mine. So, thank you.
Commissioner Twilliger.
Well, I would say that I am grateful for all of you as my work partners, truly, truly, from the bottom of my heart. Grateful to all of you, and I am grateful for the entire team here at County Services Building, and I'm grateful for my constituents too. So I'm going to be playing my horn still, I know that, and then whatever else I'm going to do is kind of a question. I'm taking care of a patient back home right now, so. Shoulder surgery for my husband, so all is good on the home front. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
Saturday, we had a Toys for Tots program at my facility, Geisler Enterprises, and we had over 1,000 parents show up to get toys for the children, and it started at 9:00 in the morning and didn't end until 8:00 p.m. Saturday night, a very, very successful group. It's, for those people that don't know about Toys for Tots, it's something that the Marine Corps started back in, after the Second World War. There were an awful lot of men that didn't come back from the war and left a lot of widows, especially in California, where there's a lot of Marine Corps bases, that being San Diego and Camp Pendleton and in San Francisco. It's done a wonderful thing in that now virtually every major city in the United States has a Toys for Tots program. The reason, the real reason it was started is that these widows didn't have very much money, and they had quite a few children, and the only way they were going to have a Christmas is if somebody did something about it, and the Marines started contributing the money into this start for Toys for Tots, and it's still going on today, and it's very, very successful.
You're here.
Bravo, Jim.
Thank you.
No doubt.
December 5.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Dorian.
I'm going to keep coming back to these meetings for a long time, as long as I have a ride.
Thank you. I would like to say it has been a pleasure. Jim, you and I have known each other forever, and so we were friends before we started working together, but again, like somebody said, it's bittersweet. The commissioners that were here were losing, have been fantastic people. All of you guys I respect, and have really enjoyed working with you. With that being said, Bridgette and Jessica have got a couple things to present you guys with, so, but again, thank you for your service.
Well, these are Petoskey stones representing your time here on the board.
Oh, wow.
Yours is a little older than everybody else's.
Yours has got more fossils.
Yeah. Yours is a little older.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what a fossil is, but maybe.
There you go. Pretty much.
Are you one?
I could be.
That is beautiful.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Very, very, very cool. Okay, we're going to keep on rolling, and it feels like this was kind of short, but again, thank you, guys. You guys have been a pleasure to work with. Let's go to meeting schedules. I don't think there'll be a lot, but let's start with you, Commissioner Snyder.
Sure. So, we have our VOC Christmas party tonight, the last one. There are several retirements of wonderful county employees and their celebrations. Those have been sent. The road commission has a meeting 9:00 a.m. on the 19th at the road commission. Parks has a meeting and Christmas party after that at 11:00 a.m. at the Sanford Lake Park office. I'm not sure, I need to get confirmation if we still have a Sanford Lake Improvement Board meeting that evening, the 19th, at 7:00 p.m. And then I think I'm going to take the rest of the year off.
Good for you. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Glazer.
Yes. I have an 11:00 on Thursday, Parks and Recreation meeting, followed by a Christmas lunch for the board and the staff. The SUD Oversight Policy Board canceled their meeting for December with no real business, and MAC canceled their meetings for Monday, the 23rd. I guess the legislature being perhaps in business was their rationale, so I'm wrapped up, wrapping up.
Wrapping up. Commissioner Twilliger.
Yeah, things are wrapping up. I plan to attend the Christmas party tonight and wouldn't miss it, and as Jeanette said, there's a whole bunch of retirement parties, so I planned to attend some of those. And then there's also going to be Materials Management Planning meeting that I plan to attend, which will be right here Friday, and I do, I'm interested in that, so I plan to attend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Geisler.
I think tonight, this afternoon at 4:30 will be the end of my association with the county of Midland. It's been a great 14 years, and I appreciate working with all of you. It's been a good experience. I think we have had an awfully good group of people running the county, and that goes for Bridgette. Thank you.
Commissioner Dorian.
I have none to announce, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And all the thing I say is 4:30, Christmas party tonight. Everybody, don't forget to bring your white elephant gift, and we'll see everybody tonight, and that's all I have. So at this moment, I would take a motion to go into closed session for labor negotiations.
Motion to go into closed session for labor negotiations.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we're going to go into closed session. So much for the party. So much for the party.